Well, good evening. We'll call this meeting of the Sebastian City Council to order. Please rise for the invocation given by Pastor Karen Liedahl from Christ the King Lutheran Church. Remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Almighty God, we pray that you would bring your blessings upon the public servants in the government of our beloved city of Sebastian, especially our mayor and this assembled council. As you have plans for us and the power to make them happen, we ask that you would give our community leaders and officials the knowledge of your will for your people. Let them remember that they serve a public trust beyond personal gain or glory. May they see that no community lives for itself alone, but is responsible to you for the well-being of all your people. Tonight, we especially give you thanks for the diligent dedication to environmental stewardship by those whom will be acknowledged with a municipal achievement award by the Florida League of Cities. We pray for the success of those who bring proclamations addressing the issues of local hunger, school attendance, and early learning. We pray for guidance and wisdom on all other matters on the agenda set before this council tonight. And then give us, we pray, the grace to live together in unity and peace as a community that seeks to be a reflection of the Lord's vision of God's will being done here on earth as it is in heaven. It is, in the name of our Lord, we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Mayor Gilmore.
Here.
Vice Mayor Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Coy.
Here.
Councilmember Hill.
Here.
And Councilmember McPartland has requested an excused absence.
Are there any agenda modifications? Seeing none. First item is a presentation of the Florida League of Cities Municipal Achievement Award for Environmental Stewardship by the Florida League's president, Matthew Surancy, who's the mayor in the city of Hawthorne. Come on down.
I don't want to have my back to you, so I apologize. Appreciate it. There you go. Come on, come on. We'll take a photo here in a second, too. Well, good evening. Good evening, Mayor Gilmore, city council members and staff, as well as the public that's here. Not sure if that one's on, but for the record, my name is Matt Surancy, and I'm the mayor of the city of Hawthorne, which is up near Gainesville. And I'm also the president of the Florida League of Cities, which is an institution of over 410 municipalities throughout the state. Each year, we have this special honor of recognizing cities throughout our state. It is an honor for me to be with you this evening to present the coveted Florida Municipal Achievement Award in the environmental stewardship category. The Environmental Stewardship Award focuses on city programs that promote conservation, improve and protect environmental conditions, and/or provide environmental education and outreach programs within the city. The city of Sebastian's winning entry, Stormwater Monitoring and Testing Program Protecting the Indian River Lagoon, details the aspects of this program and the city's positive steps to protect the lagoon to ensure that its natural beauty will be enjoyed by residents and visitors now and for generations to come. The Florida Municipal Achievement Awards have recognized innovation and excellence in government, local government programs for nearly a decade now. Your nomination was an excellent entry from Sebastian's environmental efforts through this program, and they're outstanding. I serve also on the environmental committee for the League of Cities, and this is something that's been a big topic for not only just y'all here locally and throughout this region, but throughout the state, is focusing on the Indian River Lagoon. Now, on behalf of the Florida League of Cities, I'm honored to present you with the 2015 Muni Award. Congratulations.
Want to get this in front? Should we be in front? Okay. I want to... Yeah, I want to recognize Cynthia and Watson, Michelle Stromberg, our environmental specialist, and Frank Watanabe, who is our community development director, also our engineer, also wears a couple of other hats, but this is a team effort. And so, without these folks here, we wouldn't be getting this award. So, thank you for all you do. And thank council for backing us up and voting to do what we're supposed to do, is take care of the environment, right? Okay.
Thank you. Also, just if you'd like to see more about what the League of Cities does and has this on our website as well, you can check it out on our league website. It features the city of Sebastian on it. So, thank y'all again.
All right. We have now a proclamation for the Treasure Coast Food Bank. Are they here? Yeah, come on down. Okay, this is a proclamation for the Treasure Coast Food Bank for Hunger Action Month in Sebastian, Florida. Says, "Whereas hunger and poverty remain issues of grave concern in the United States, the state of Florida, the Treasure Coast, and the city of Sebastian; and whereas the city of Sebastian is committed to taking steps to raise awareness about the need to combat hunger in every part of our city and to provide additional resources that the citizens of Sebastian need; and whereas the city of Sebastian is committed to working with the Treasure Coast Food Bank and mobilizing people about..."
It wasn't that.
Wasn't that? Okay. I'm not going to start over again. Where did I leave off? "Whereas the food banks and hunger relief organizations across the country, including the Treasure Coast Food Bank, will host numerous events throughout the month of September to shed light on this important issue and encourage involvement in efforts to end hunger in their local community. Now therefore, I, Richard H. Gilmore, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Sebastian, Florida, and on behalf of the Sebastian City Council, do hereby proclaim September as Hunger Action Month in Sebastian, and call this observance to the attention of our citizens." And I've signed that, and that's your proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor Gilmore, Vice Mayor Adams, and the entire council. The city of Sebastian has supported us for the last couple of years since we've been doing Hunger Action Month, and we always appreciate coming here and getting the acknowledgement and helping us spread the word about what we do in the community. There are 100,000 people each week that don't know where their next meal is coming from. That's the work that we do on a daily basis to try to help those people that are struggling to make ends meet and help them be able to put food on their tables. Those are the people that we are trying to help bring more awareness to throughout the month of September. So, thank you for your support, and we very much appreciate this proclamation.
Thank you. This next proclamation is designating the month of September as Attendance Awareness Month. Do we have someone here for that? Oh, okay. Ms. Walker?
Councilmember McPartland is absent for this attendance awareness.
Pardon me? Is that an echo?
Later.
Ms. O'Bryant?
Yeah.
Let me read this. Designating the month of September 15th as Attendance Awareness Month. Whereas chronic absences, missing 10% or more of school for any reason, including excused and unexcused absences, or just two or three days a month, is a proven predictor of academic trouble and dropout rates; and whereas improving attendance and reducing chronic absences takes commitment, collaboration, and tailored approaches to particular challenges and strengths in each community; and whereas chronic absences predicts lower third-grade reading proficiency, course failure, and eventually dropout, and it weakens our communities and our local economy; and whereas schools and community partners can reach out more frequently to absent students to determine why they're missing school and what would help them attend more regularly; and whereas chronic absences can be significantly reduced when schools, parents, and communities work together to monitor and promote good attendance and address hurdles that keep children from getting to school. Now therefore, I, Richard H. Gilmore, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Sebastian, Florida, and on behalf of the Sebastian City Council, do hereby proclaim that our city will stand with the nation in recognizing September as Attendance Awareness Month, and commit to focusing on reducing chronic absenteeism to give all children an equitable opportunity to learn, grow, and thrive academically, emotionally, and socially. And I've signed this as of the state. So, thank you so much. Do you want to have to say something?
Thank you, Mayor Gilmore. Anna E. Casey has said that literacy is the number-one indicator of community prosperity. And the moonshot moment is our county's goal to have 90% of our third graders reading proficiently and on grade level by the end of third grade by 2018. Right now, in our county, about 44% of children are not reading on grade level. That mirrors the rest of the nation. And we realize, and through studies, and national studies have shown, that attendance really matters. So, we are asking the school districts doing a lot of work, and we're asking the community to help everyone to realize that even as young as kindergarten, attending school regularly really does matter. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. This last is a proclamation recognizing city of Sebastian's first annual Storybook Forest, September 12, 2015. Whereas the first annual Storybook Forest will take place in Riverview Park on September 12, 2015, bringing together early childhood educators, local agencies, and businesses to share with children and families a new way to promote early literacy; and whereas the purpose of Storybook Forest is to create a magical storybook land where children can experience their favorite storybooks in a whole new way through interactive play, music, and crafts; and whereas research indicates that children who are exposed to reading at an early age acquire 30 million more vocabulary words than those not exposed to... I didn't know there was that many words in the... Wow, that's a lot. Yeah. And whereas, in recognition of the importance of early literacy, this free event is being hosted by the Early Learning Coalition of Indian River, Martin, and Okeechobee Counties. Now therefore, I, Richard H. Gilmore, mayor of the city of Sebastian, and on behalf of the Sebastian City Council, do hereby proclaim the importance of literacy for the children in our community, and encourage families to take part in the Storybook Forest on Saturday, September 12. That would be this Saturday, correct? In Riverview Park. And I've signed this, and that is your proclamation. Would you like to say some words about how magical this is going to be?
Yes, we're very excited. It's our first event here. Right now, we have over 30 different agencies that's going to participate. Each individual agency will have a different storybook that they will bring to life, so they may have characters, activities, or things like that related to the storybook. We've also had the honor of partner with the Barbara Bush Foundation. We're going to be able to give all the families that attend online subscription to 40 interactive books that they can work with their children from zero to three, so they'll have free access to that for like six months. And like I said, we're just really, really excited. We've been working really hard. Really easy working with the city of Sebastian, no issues. So, we look forward to seeing everyone. It's 10 to 2 on Saturday at Riverview Park. So, we're just praying and crossing our fingers for great weather.
Okay.
And thank you.
We'll make sure that you have great weather. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, may I just add something to that that's over here?
Yes.
Thank you very much for doing this up here. I'm looking forward to being down there. I will be doing my No More Rain Dance until Sunday dance. And what a perfect place to do this, in our Storybook Fairy Tale Riverview Park. So, thank you for doing it, and I hope this becomes an annual event.
I don't know if this ties in with that or not, but I know that, you know, at our League of Cities meeting, at our breakfast, we had the Comcast representative, and they have an initiative where if there are underprivileged families out there that don't have access to Internet, if they're not currently subscribing to Comcast, they can get Internet service for like $9.95 a month. I'm sure that that's in the schools, but that's an initiative that probably would be a little bit more important to someone older than preschool. But, I mean, probably if they're watching this on Comcast, they're not available, they can't get it. But I'm just wondering if... Are you involved in that at all? Okay. That would be probably the schools. Okay. Friday is Patriots' Day, 9/11 Remembrance at Veterans Memorial at Riverview Park. That's at 8:30 a.m. Each year, that gets more and more folks coming, so looking forward to that. Saturday, the Storybook Forest Event for Children, 10 a.m. till 2. And then Thursday, October 8, is Sebastian's Community Night Out hosted by Police Department. That's also in Riverview Park, 5:30 till 7:30. Is that right, Michelle? 5:30 till 7:30, Thursday, October 8. Is there any other announcements? Seeing none. Moving on to the consent agenda. Council, what's your pleasure?
Move to approve.
Second. Okay, do we need a roll call vote on this?
Please. Mayor Gilmore.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Adams.
Yes.
Mr. Hill.
Yes.
Ms. Coy.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to committee reports and appointments. The MPO Citizens Advisory Committee, we are to consider the appointment of Dick Croll to alternate position. I think we have one position open and one person...
We have an opening for an alternate on the MPO Citizen Committee, and he'd like to serve.
All right. I would say if we have one opening and one person, that would be a good fit, then, wouldn't it?
Consent.
Okay. So, thank you for service, Mr. Croll. And under the construction board, we have an interview unless waived for one expired regular member plumbing position, and submit notifications or nominations for one expired regular member contractor person.
And the two applicants are the two current members, and their terms were expiring. They're the only applicants?
And they wish to continue and stay?
Yes.
Well, that's pretty easy, too, isn't it?
Let's do that.
Okay.
Consent.
Make it so. Youth Advisory Board, Vice Chairman Anthony Scaramuzzi is here for a presentation. Come on down, Anthony.
I am Anthony Scaramuzzi. I'm with the vice chair... I'm the vice chair of the Youth Advisory Board, and I am here today to present what I think are a few traffic problems around the area. I'm going to be learning how to drive in a couple of months, so I figured I'd present The first one is between Louisiana Avenue and Sebastian Boulevard. I think that there should be more signs, and there's this faded stop sign, and if you're going straight, you have to cut across the lanes in the opposite direction to get onto Louisiana. And I feel that there should be more wrong-way, like you can't turn that way, signs. This is a picture of Barber Street from right where the fire station starts and to the other side of the football field. I feel that there should be like a caution sign stating caution, children at play, because there's a skate factory, I mean, like a skate park, a baseball field, and a football field, plus a daycare and a fire station. And there's no signs that state that that is there. This is when you're pulling into Roseland from 512. If you go right, the stop sign is partially behind a tree, and the crosswalk, if you... in order to pull, like to see if there's cars coming, you have to pull onto the crosswalk, which if there was somebody riding the bike, you would hit them. Thank you for letting me address what I feel is necessary. Thank you.
Thank you, Anthony, for bringing that to our attention. And I would hope that more of our boards would do the same, bring information like that to us, and then we can look at Mr. Watanabe and say, what do you think, Mr. Watanabe?
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Would you want me to respond?
Sure.
On the first item, actually, that location is on private property. We will make sure that the property owner is aware of it, and if we can, we'll help him out as well for signage. On the second one, on Barber Street, that's a good idea. Actually, the city manager and I, we've had discussions regarding that area, regarding the daycare across the street, providing some kind of additional crossings, and I think the idea of additional signage would be a better, would be a good idea. So, we'll take a look into that location as well.
Mm-hmm.
And then the last location regarding Roseland at the intersection at 512, that's in the county, actually. We've had other requests regarding that bike path when it comes around the hedge. We actually have gone out there and trimmed it ourselves, our public works crews, but it's still within the county, and I will make sure Chris Moore at the county is aware of it again.
Okay, great. Great answers.
Mr. Mayor, may I?
Yes.
Just wanted to thank Anthony for that presentation. Very pleased. This is the type of thing that I was expecting from the youth council, and it's really very thrilling to see something like this come out of the council. And I'm looking forward to more like this. That's what we need, a partnership between us and the other, and the committees, bring things to our attention that we might not have noticed, so we can work together on it. So, I'm very pleased. Thank you very much.
Anthony, make sure you let them know, Anthony, over here. I don't know why, when I'm talking out of the mic, people are looking around, where's that voice coming? Make sure you let your board know that you got results. You got results today. So, that'll maybe give them some motivation, so you can bring some more stuff to us. And not just you, we want to see their faces, too. So, encourage your peers, and thank you.
Okay, that brings us to item number nine. Public hearings, we have none. Item number 10, unfinished business. Mr. Griffin?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. Council, as you know, in May, we started a discussion about replacing the Sebastian Municipal Golf Course irrigation system, moving us into the 21st century in that regard. Numerous problems with that over the years, and finally, I think we came to the unified decision that we had to move forward on that. We got specs together, placed a public bid, received four bids, and conducted telephone interviews with a committee made up of myself and director of golf, city engineer, and our CFO. We selected, it was a very close vote, actually, but we did select one contractor, Nut Construction. What I'm asking for tonight is authorization to move forward into... And by the way, that was a design build, and therefore, the selection was made on qualifications. Now, we move to the next phase in CCNA negotiations, which would be about price and cost. I would like authorization tonight to proceed with that in an amount not to exceed $9.98 500, which was Nut's Construction's bid. Thank you.
Council, what's your pleasure? I'd move approval. Okay. Do you want to go with the public? Sure. Open this up to public comment. Is there any public comment?
Ben Hocker, city of Sebastian. I didn't have time to run my print-off, but we have a contract, the city, using a company called SMGC for maintenance of the golf course. Their contract runs from 2010 to 2024. It's approximately a half a million dollars plus a year. In there, under irrigation, paragraph A, it states, "Contractor must provide all necessary labor to maintain irrigation system. Must be responsible for normal repair of all sprinkler heads, valves, wiring, pipe, and controllers downstream of the power station. Parts and labor will be provided by SMGC." Paragraph B, "Irrigation system will be serviced and maintained on a regular basis and not less than twice per year at the expense of SMCG." Paragraph C, "Contractor must be extremely familiar with all phases of irrigation operation, with emphasis on the OSMAC system and the Hoover Irrigation Flow Guards Centrifugal System. Total number of irrigation heads on SMGC property is 610." My question is, we have a contract. To me, it reads, "The gentleman who has that contract should have been performing all the maintenance. Our obligation from the city is to provide repair parts for the irrigation system, specialized I think that word was "cost" for irrigation system. Why are we going out with a million-dollar contract when we already have a half a million plus a year to a maintenance company? And our obligation would be some piping, they put it in?
Well, it's... Yeah. Is that your question? Mr. Hocker's done, I can...
Well, it's in our contract we have. Why are we going further for a bid? That's my question.
Okay. And I'm going to turn that over to Jim to answer. Mr. Hill is in the business of golf courses.
I realize that.
He can give you a better answer than I can.
Is that your question? That's your question?
Yeah. Why are we going for a million-dollar contract?
I have no desire to get in to do a debate, so I'm just wondering, do you have anything more? I'll gladly answer your question when you're finished.
Go ahead. I'm done.
Okay. Well, the contract that... Well, the contract that we have with IGM is a contract for maintenance of the golf course itself. The irrigation system is part of the maintenance of that golf course. Their contract is to maintain that irrigation system, which they have been doing. The question is not whether or not the irrigation system is maintainable under that contract, which it is, but it's whether or not the maintenance of that irrigation system is suitable for us to go forward in the future. The irrigation itself is antiquated. It's old to the point of causing aesthetic and playability issues on the golf course, requiring replacement of the system. Now, IGM has done a quality job of maintaining what they have. However, I believe it's the city's desire to go forward with a better product than we've been supplying our customer. And so by replacing the system, we're going to be providing a better product overall because the old irrigation system is antiquated and doesn't, doesn't lend itself to providing the product that we want to put out there. Thank you.
Well, under this contract, why don't we just provide the parts and let the gentleman who has the contract put it in?
Well, here's, think of it this way. If you had a mechanic that maintained your automobile, there comes a point in time when the engine is just tired and needs a ring job. If you were giving him $20 to change your oil, would you expect him to change your rings, too?
The contract says he does.
No, no, that doesn't.
Well, then I misinterpret. Thank you.
Uh-huh. Thank you. All right. Is there any other? Yes, sir. Come on down.
Madam, gentlemen of the council, Mr. Mayor, my name is Mike Pignato. I'm a golf course irrigation designer and consultant. I've been in business since 1994. We've completed over 250 projects around the eastern United States Caribbean, and actually across into Africa. Of those, three of them are top tour or top PGA Tour events at the stadium course at Quail Hollow in Charlotte, North Carolina, and at the Tour Championship in Atlanta, one of which will be the future site in 2017 of a major. The PGA will be hosted at Quail Hollow. Of the 250 projects, 15 of those have been state, county, or local municipality golf course projects. I assisted, initially assisted the City of Sebastian in authoring the sections of the RFP for this project. I met on site with the golf course superintendent to go over our proposed head layout, ride the property, and compare our drawings to the actual site conditions that were prevalent on the golf course. We looked at areas that were to be maintained as golf-quality turf versus un-irrigated areas that were just simply being mowed. The more irrigation you have, the more you have to fertilize, or the more water you use, the more it costs. Through that process, we developed what I thought was a very competitive plan, providing the golf course approximately 350 more sprinklers than you currently have, and irrigating all of the corridors exactly as golf staff felt was required. I selected our contractor, Stallman England, to, who installed the new irrigation system at Sandridge two years ago. Chris Minno, sitting in the back, is a certified HPE welding instructor and a certified field inspector, and is one of the most qualified HPE contractors in the southeast United States. And with the Sandridge project, I selected him because I thought it would have local flavor and have a favorable view by all looking. It clearly states in the bid documents that even though this is a design build, that the contract agreement will be rewarded, awarded to the lowest responsive and responsible bidder, whose bid, conforming to the specifications and instructions to the bidder, will be the most advantageous to the city in consideration of price, which were $50,000 lower than Nut, of time, which we, in our schedule, were going to be off the job six weeks prior to the scheduled completion, and allow, which was basically the Christmas holidays, and other factors as determined by the city. The other factors as determined by the city can be somewhat ambiguous. The only other criteria noted was a telephone interview that was to take place with the four individuals, as mentioned. In preparation for the phone interview, I inquired with Mrs. Tarbell, am I to call into a number, or am I to dial in my contractor to participate in this process? I was told that only the designers were to participate in the process, yet Nut Construction was able to have not only the designer, but the two owners of the process involved in their conversation, which I think greatly adversely affected the decisions. I know, I know for a fact that we were the low bid by $50,000, and as described in both our RFP submittal and during our phone interview, that our construction schedule and staffing of the project would have had us off the job and 100% complete by the Christmas holidays, thus giving the city uninterrupted golf and ringing the cash register through your height of the golfing season. In preparing for this meeting and during my research, I discovered that one of the last major golf-related RFPs pertained to the maintenance contract for the golf course. During that process, the management company that had been in place for many years, and because of their tenure, must have been doing, been doing a satisfactory job, nonetheless, they lost the project to a lower qualified bid. And I believe that amount was actually less than the difference between our bid and Mr. Nut's. This is not to question the qualification of ours versus theirs. I know for a fact that you'll receive an outstanding job by Mr. Nut. Mr. Nut has worked for me for, on 12 to 15 different projects, and I will be working with Nut Construction next summer in Miami on a $2 million Jack Nicklaus irrigation system on a redo for Mr. Nicklaus. But being that we were the low bid, and our construction schedule, as described, was much faster, I have to ask, why are the contract negotiations starting with a high bid when we followed the city's own directive and documents? Having participated in 15 publicly bid golf course projects, all of them have started with the lowest bid, qualified it or disqualified it, and moved on to the next highest bid. Never did we go from the low bid as qualified to the high bid. Yet this one seems to be handled differently and outside the provisions described herein within the bid documents. I realize that this is all news to you folks, you haven't had time to digest this, but I felt it important. I wouldn't have gotten in my car and driven 100 miles had we been $1 high, because I understand the nature of the bid process and the laws within the state of Florida to ensure the integrity of a publicly bid process. A design build on a golf course is an extremely slippery slope. And I tried to encourage golf staff early on that that was going to be a problem. Evidence, the bids that came in, two were in the low 700s and two were from 950 to a million. The two qualified entities, if you were to ask to put together the best teams you could in the southeast, those two would be the entities. So you, like I said, I have no issues with the qualifications, but I do take issue with the process that has been somehow diverted to. I'm asking that you not approve the nomination by staff, and that we either revisit this. I did not have time to understand the policies of the submittal process to you folks, and I thought that it would be inappropriate to submit our documents to you, that you should be requesting those through staff. I sit on the Village of Wellington's Park and Recreation Council. I sit in those seats like you do. And when we have tendered contracts before us, we always have to receive them from staff and not directly from a contractor. I'm asking you to table this, review it, have a publicly held interview with questions that are not as softballish as these six questions were. If you review the questions, and Jim, you being in the business, if you'll review the questions, several, two of them don't even pertain to the project, at least to Nut or myself, and ask that you just review this.
Does anybody have any questions?
Kind of like to hear a staff response.
I stand by my presentation. I stand by the interview process. I stand by the integrity of the four people who are involved in the interview process. And I think we should move on.
I'm not questioning the integrity, but in your own agenda, it states a scoring and a ranking. I know for a fact there was a scoring and a ranking, but yet, there was a vote. Typically, in a public process, if a scoring and a ranking is used, it's a weighted system where the bid has a calibrated ranking, the design has a calibrated ranking, and so does the, the interview process, of which I wasn't afforded the same opportunities as Mr. Nut was. All of that is then combined, and the score is the score. Yet when I requested a copy of the minutes and the scores, because I figured it had to be a public meeting, meeting, or it would violate sunshine laws, I was told that it was a vote of three to one. Well, a vote and a scoring system don't apply, can't apply in the same dynamic. I'm not questioning integrity. Please, don't misunderstand that. I'm, I'm asking that the process be followed as laid out in the documents originally.
I, I would beg to differ with you on, on your opinion of the vote and the, the scoring process being totally separate entities and two. We have in the past, and rather frequently, used a scoring system and then a deliberation process. There's no need to discuss anything further if you're just going to rank it 1, 2, 3, 4. We have done it more than one occasion for many, many projects. It is a process, and part of the deliberations are past experience. I mean, lots of things can weigh in that are not necessarily scored. The process is geared to be fair. And I, I really have to back the people that I have seen perform.
I understand.
And, and so I'm...
But the fairness ended when we, when I was not allowed to have my contractor involved in the meeting. There, that, that in and of itself gave my competition on this job, that we beat by $50,000, an unfair advantage, to the point that it impressed members of the board that were listening to this. So I was told by Ms. Tarbell that I was only, and even your document says, only the designers shall be, shall be interviewed, then at the bottom. And in this case, the contractor was allowed to participate. So as a, as a, as a design build process, you as a city needs to develop the confidence, not only in the designer, which I figured you had because I helped you establish some of the ground rules of the process initially, but you also have to establish confidence in the contractor. That was afforded to Nut Irrigation, but it wasn't afforded to Stallman England. So I can assure you that there's not enough difference between Stallman England and Nut Irrigation to warrant spending $50,000 additional dollars on this process, on this project. It just isn't fair.
And again, I have, you seem like a really nice guy in Wellington.
I'm a great guy.
I bet you are.
This was a beauty contest, I would have lost.
You know, I, again, I have to go back and, and look at our process and my experience over time with our process. And I have really not, I, we've had other people over the past 10 years that I've sat up here, we've had other people come and challenge our process. And, and over and over again, with very, you know, similar type arguments to yours, not the same, but you know, it, it always comes back to our staff. And I have, I have to look at this guy sitting right in front of me here, who I trust implicitly to deal with city business. If I did not, if I ever suspected something was really, really wrong, I'd be on him. And so everyone else...
And again, I'm not questioning the integrity.
And when he sits there and looks me in the eye, I asked him the question publicly, and he looked me in the eye, and he, he, he said, "Trust the system. We did the process. It's time to move on." I'm going to hold, hold to that. And I, I'm not calling you a liar by any means.
No, 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 I understand that.
Okay? I'm, I'm sorry you had a bad experience.
Yeah, and I, I think that we, we would all agree that staff would agree, too, that there's two, two bidders here that were far superior to the two others that bid. I would take exception to the, the comment that it's a sunshine issue because none of the people that interviewed you were subject to sunshine law. If it was part of us, it'd be a different story. If we were doing the, if we were doing the interviewing, then it would be a sunshine issue. But since it was not us, I don't think that holds.
Okay. And that's not anything other than, than just looking for clarity.
And I would say, I would say this, if, you know, if we can't make a, make a deal with, with Nut Construction, we'll be coming back to you.
And, and understanding that, sir. But, but again, the, the, the paperwork that's in place, the bid documents state that you will be awarded to the lowest responsive and qualified bidder. And, and there's no, let's, there's, I find it difficult to believe that my team would not have been viewed as qualified. So in that, the negotiation should have started with the lowest qualified bidder, as it calls out in y'all's documents.
Well, but again, sir, the way this works is that the CCNN, the way that works is we have to take the most qualified. And unfortunately, the scoring says that you're, you're close, but you're not as high as was Nut.
Mr. Ginsburg, are you, are you satisfied that within, we're within the legal limits of a, of, of all the advertisements that we have? Have we followed our process and not subjected ourselves to lawsuit?
I think you have followed the process. I think that the, as is always the case, you have the right to reject bids and start over, or you can take the manager's recommendation and go forward with the recommended responder.
You know, it's like any contract. You know, there's always that clause in there, or a job description, other duties as assigned. You know, we, we have protected ourselves within the bidding process, too. And, and there are other items. So to say that it's based on that solely, when we do have other recourse, I think is a bad assumption.
Well, at the, at the pre-bid, for example, we were told that your, your agronomist on site was going to be part of the interview process and part of the decision-making process. She was not on that phone call.
Yeah. Sir, your time has expired.
Okay. You know what? I thank you very much. I can see where this was going to go. Thank you. Have a great evening.
Would there be anybody else from the public to speak on this? Any comments? Vice Mayor Adams, do you have any?
All I can say is, even if we look at the scoring, Nut came out ahead. So if we're basing it on scoring alone, that alone, to me says Nut's the top choice. And like Ms. Coys said, we depend on our city manager. We know him and his skills and his staff are competent. I stand by his recommendation.
Counsel member here.
I would say any, either one of the two, two contractors that we were talking about would be wonderful contractors. I've heard of both of them, and I know they're, they're very, very qualified. I would definitely defer to staff, their recommendation, and I think they've done a fine job. And I know the individuals who are on the, the committee, so I'm very, very comfortable with that. I have some questions of staff relative to the proposals.
Sure.
Not necessarily that. The, I guess to Greg, who's going to be overseeing the operation, the construction out there on the golf course?
Yes, I'll be the main contact, but of course, we'll have the IGM staff there as well, along with, with Frank Watanabe and...
Right. The main level of responsibility is going to be in your office, or the, the day-to-day operation, the day-to-day construction operation out there is going to be by IGM, but you're obviously going to be the one who's going to have to be mostly responsible, as, you know, IGM could be gone in a few years, and we're, we're going to, we're going to have this system for many years. So I know you know that.
Oh, of course.
Of course. The second question I had, now, I would assume that we, we did purposely haven't gotten into what types of, of system is going to go in. I know we've got the HTP system, which is very good. I think the council should be happy that we've gone that route. I've scoured the, the documents, and I probably missed, or maybe we haven't gotten to the point yet where we're talking Toro, we're talking those types of system. Who, are we going to have a process to, to come up with which of those systems we're going to put in? Because, you know, there are some systems out there, Century and some other ones that could be considerably less expensive, but may not... could be considerably less expensive, but may not necessarily be what we're going to want over the years. So, who, when do we get into that process?
Yeah, that would be the next thing after this meeting. We'll meet with Nutt Construction and just begin, you know, all of that, you know, what components, whether it's Toro, Rainbird, Century. We will look at their plans. Right now, there's, you know, about 850 heads. We could probably reduce that a little bit, which would, of course, reduce the cost as well. So, yeah, all that will be done once we start getting into meetings with them.
And that includes the satellites?
The controllers, everything. Yeah, obviously, we're leaning towards wireless and individual head control, all wireless.
Right, of course. Well, I tell you, council, I look forward to seeing a system go in the ground out there, you know, and playing golf. For the last few years, you could see progressively that things getting a little bit worse, where you have irrigation blowouts, so you have, or even just the small leaks that we have out there, they're the worst ones, the small leaks that cause these great wet areas. And it'll be good, it's going to provide a much better product for the customer out there when we get this installed.
Okay, if there's no other deliberation, roll call, please.
Sure. Vice Mayor Adams?
Yes.
Ms. Coy?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mayor Gilmore?
Yes. All right, that passes unanimously. We are now to item number 11, public input. This is where someone can bring any new information to the city council. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on anything? Yes, come on down.
Hello, my name is Karen Talon, and I just wanted to talk to you about pickleball, which is like a brand-new sport that's only been around for 50 years. And thanks to you painting the lines at the Schuman Drive Park Courts, we've been able to bring pickleball here. So, in the last four months, we've been playing pickleball, and now it's growing, and we're getting new players every day. And there's a lot to pickleball, there's a social aspect, there's a competitive part. It's a game that you can play, that a 10-year-old can play with an 80-year-old, you know, so it's growing in schools, it's growing all over the world, there's tournaments all over. There's many states that have designated pickleball courts, and they can have their own tournaments, and it's just, it's a sport that's really taking off with everyone for many reasons. So, it's wonderful cardio, and we're playing at the Schuman Drive Park five days a week right now. And when the snowbirds come, we're even going to have more people playing. So, I just wanted to tell you about that.
Okay.
Are you asking us for more courts? Is that what you want?
Eventually, there will be a need.
I was getting that kind of hint.
I already, it's already here in Sebastian, and it's going to get bigger and bigger. And there is going to be...
Sweeter dill.
It's going to be a demand that we're going to have here. It's going to happen, and it's going to happen quickly. I actually brought the ambassador from Vero Beach to tell you how quickly this can happen. In Sebastian, we've only been playing for four months. Now, they've been playing for a year, so he's going to tell you how it's, how the sport picks up, how people love it, how they become addicted to it, and how it's going to become something that benefits the community and that everybody in the city is going to want to have it. I mean, it's going to bring a lot of revenue and everything, too. So, here's Ken Roberts, he's here to tell you about pickleball as well.
Thank you for having us. I'm an ambassador in Vero Beach, Karen is up here in Sebastian. Our job as an ambassador is a non-paid position, volunteer with the USA Pickleball Association, which is a national organization, it's kind of like PGA or Major League Baseball and all that. But our job is to come out and talk to people like yourselves, educate, train. We have new people come all the time. Basically, in our county, give you a little bit of history, and then I'll hit you up for some courts in a minute. Started probably about three or four years ago, some guys playing down at Timber Ridge Tennis Facility, started playing pickleball on a lined court. Then last year, we started down at South County Park, the county lined one of their tennis courts, just like you have here, with the pickleball. The problem with that is you've got to play on a, a pickleball court's like a third of the size of a tennis court, and you have to walk 40 feet to get the ball when you miss it. But you're not supposed to miss it, so you shouldn't have that problem, but people do. Then they were redoing that court because of cracks and stuff, so we had to go find a new home temporarily. That was about four, or five, six people at that point. We went to Pocahontas Park, they have four tennis courts there, very seldom used, and the recreation director is a friend of mine, we said, "Can we go there and can we chalk lines?" So, we, what we did was we put our, we could actually put six pickleball courts on two tennis courts. So, we did that since last August, and then we just stayed there, we didn't go anywhere. So, we lobbied them, we said, "Hey, can we, we've got all these people, can we line these courts?" And he said, "Yeah." So, they put it in the budget, so we thought it was a major coup that we got, that they were going to give us lined, like you have at your place, on the tennis courts. So, then we started getting people in, it started going from six to eight, to 12 to 14, to 15 to 16. A year later, we have 262 people on our email list today. That's probably all, but 30 of those have either have played, they're seasonal, they are playing now, or they will come and play. Your site is listed on the USA PA website, it's places to play. If somebody comes down from the north, they want to play in Sebastian, they'll click on Sebastian, they can see, "Call Karen," see Vero Beach, call me, gives hours and all that stuff. So, we have people all the time. There was a nice story in the, I think it's called Sebastian News you have up here last week about pickleball, and it's just growing exponentially around the country, especially here. The city, over the past year, put out bids, just like your bidding process here. They had a contractor come in, and as of last Thursday, they opened six permanent pickleball courts. They wiped out two of the tennis courts. What's nice about that is they had to resurface the courts anyway. So, the additional cost to put six pickleball courts on two tennis courts, after you do the resurfacing, was only $5,600. So, less than $1,000 a court, you could have a pickleball court, or six pickleball courts on a tennis. Now, I understand your recreation system here is probably a little different, you're going to be busy in season, tennis people don't want to have their courts taken over by us. If there's anything else, any other options, a new facility would be great, however, that costs a lot of money, and, you know, I don't want to go there. But what I can tell you is pickleball around the county, where it's coming from. The Jungle Club has recently added six indoor courts. Marbres, a beachside complex, has lined a parking lot. South County Park has two courts now. Citrus Springs is a community in Vero Beach, they added four pickleball courts to one tennis court. So, the economy's of scale, you can have 16 people playing pickleball on the same area, you can have four people playing tennis. Indian River Estates, Life Salt Community, for average age out there is 80, they just put one in a multipurpose building with taped floor. And my job, we went out and we did demos for these people. We went out and thought maybe we might have four or five people, we had 40 people in there watching a demo, then they got to try it. Garden Grove and Grove Isle are two facilities, South Vero, down by Oslo Road, they have lined pickleball courts. John's Island and Vista Gardens are also looking, John's Island's looking at getting rid of a tennis court and adding four pickleball courts. Vista Gardens is part of Vista Royale, they're looking at putting something inside, their tennis players will not let them put it outside, so they have to do something else. The big thing here is Harmony Reserve. That's a new complex going in north of the mall, between 58th and 66th Street. I don't know if you know Chuck McLean, he supposedly has a complex, he's doing right over here somewhere, he's in charge of that. They were going to put in four pickleball courts, it's a 55 in order community, four pickleball courts, and four tennis courts. And then they started hearing all this stuff about pickleball, so they called me in and talked to me, and I did a little dog and pony show, and told them what I, just like I'm telling you guys, just the facts, what's out there. So, now they're contemplating going from four pickleball courts, starting with 12. And I don't know if they're going to wipe out their tennis, but they'll probably hold off on their tennis, make it a dedicated pickleball. I don't know if you know anything about The Villages, but The Villages is the senior Disneyland, Disneyland for seniors. They have 140 pickleball courts, they have, over 10,000 people play, population of about 150 up around Ocala or wherever it is. So, that's what they want to do on the East Coast. In the last, since January, we've had three people that moved into the area, bought homes just because of pickleball. It's, as Karen said, it's a very social sport, we sit, we have fun, when your time comes to play, you either play or sit there and drink and talk, we do social events, so there is a social component to it as well. So...
Anybody who's ever played a paddle sport is able to take it off easily, and it's something that people who are retired, or seniors who bodies are aching, and they can't get around the tennis court as quickly, they are able to play pickleball without, you know, having excruciating pain or anything like that. It's something that a lot of people fall back on, and it is a sport, so we also respect tennis, and we're never in any conflict with the tennis players here in the area. I mean, we have a lot of tennis players that come and play with us, so eventually, we would need our own pickleball facility, but right now, we're happy to be using the Schuman Drive Park Courts, and it's just growing, and I wanted to tell you that we really appreciate the pickleballs here in Sebastian, it's just wonderful.
I just have a quick question, if I might, because I'm still trying to envision this, and please forgive me, my hearing aids don't come in, and I'm dead serious, I get them by the next meeting, I'll have them, folks, and I'll be able to hear everything. I'm not understanding, I'm trying to visualize what this is. What kind of racket do you have, you just said paddle?
It's a paddle, it's like a ping-pong paddle, a little bit bigger than a ping-pong paddle, and a wiffle ball.
A wiffle ball?
A wiffle ball, and you play on a third, a court that's the third of a size of a tennis court.
Okay, rules like tennis, you have a net, and you have...
Yeah, you have a net, and you play with doubles. So, everybody just gets together, everybody, like here at Schuman Drive Park, everybody comes at 6:00 PM, Monday through Friday, and everybody just gets together and plays. Four people get on a court together, hit it back and forth, there's overheads and lobs and...
Kind of like badminton, but with a paddle and a, it's a slower, slower than, I got it now, I can see it. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
I might stop by.
I would love that. Everybody's welcome to come play.
I said I might stop by.
Good.
If and when you want to consider it, we're available to talk to, and there's ways that we can help you bring money for this project. There's tournaments, that's one reason. Harmony Reserve wants to go to 12 courts, because you, if you have 12, you could even do it where you have at Schuman Park, because you can, you can use your tennis courts and get 10 in there. We could probably have a fundraiser tennis tournament and give you the money, and that could be a kickoff to the funding.
You need to talk to our Parks and Recreation Board, you need to go to that board meeting, because they can be a really big advocate for you.
Well, you know, I've had, I've had people ask me about pickleball at the gym, and people that are playing tennis, are switching over to pickleball, you know? We, I think, if I'm not mistaken, Chris McCarthy had a, had a picture of a potential new site for that on Barber. We have land there that is envisioned to do a park at some point in time. We could put pickleball courts there, I'm thinking, if, you know...
Mayor, if you don't mind, I invited them here tonight, and I thought this would be a good prep-the-zone opener, and their next step, I suggested, since they do have a PowerPoint presentation, would be back to Parks and Rec, and have this bubble up through Parks and Rec, see how they feel, and then get a report from Parks and Rec, and proceed forward. I'd like to remind council that the disc golf, we had earmarked, I think it was $18,000, $18,000 for the disc golf program, which is now, we've abandoned that, so there's some possibilities.
That's not, that's not going to happen here by any means, if anything, it's just going to get bigger and better, bigger. It's just been growing over the last 50 years, and it's just, in every state, it's going into other countries.
I'm interested, I'm very, you can stop selling.
Thank you very much, your time's up.
And it sounds cheap to, it's not a high maintenance or high, high cost to initiate this project.
Hi.
Hello.
I'm Vicki Moss, president of the tennis club.
Hi.
Ah-huh. We, yeah, we don't have nothing, no problem with the pickleball, but court, two of our courts, which we have matches there from Melbourne, Vero, they have double lines. You have double lines on this, and you hit the ball, no, it was out, no, it was in, it was here, it did. We are so confused with the double lines. It is really aggravating. Those people come here for 22 years, started with two courts, right?
Yes.
Four courts.
I know you're, I know you guys, yeah.
So, but it's so confusing. We are not the youngest people. You need glasses, you need hearing aid, right? And we are too. So, you know, we all, and if the ball doesn't get, and people from out of town, they say, "What is that? What the heck are you all doing here? We don't, we can't play like that, there's two double lines, which line is ours and which line is not." So, it doesn't work for us. Pickleball is fine, I think it's great, but we're tennis people, and I've been involved here for 22 years, and this is not for us. Chris was working with us on it, and he was, Vero Beach came to him, and he says, "You have to let them people over here." But we do not, we, if we have, like they said, you can have in one court, you can have four pickleballs. And I asked him, I said, "Why don't you go over on the other side and get, and measure?" And he says, "No, because of the swell." They couldn't do it. So, we're in a bind over there, which we have, you all do everything for us for the last 20 some odd years, everything we ask, we always got, everything was good. We're not against the pickleball, I think it's great, who wants to play? I might play someday, but the double lines is completely confusing us.
Now, you're playing at Schuman?
I play Schuman and the clay courts.
Well, they haven't marked the clay courts, have they?
Oh, no, and that will never happen.
That will never happen, because they can't play on clay courts.
No, 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 not on, not on the clay courts.
No, it's never will happen on clay courts, they can't. It has to be hard courts, but I play...
So, how many, how many courts do you have at Schuman? How many courts there?
Six.
Six. And how many are striped? Two? So, you have, do you utilize all six?
All six, and more.
Well...
We have 208 people.
Okay.
And more.
Sounds like we need to look for more courts.
Yeah.
Are the colors, are the stripes, different color?
I was just thinking the same thing.
It'd be pretty simple.
It is horrible, if you see two lines and, you watch TV tonight, and watch my favorite guy Federer, you know? He wouldn't take, he would, he would walk off the courts, because you can't.
No, I fully understand that, I can understand that, but I agree with Mr. Hill, why can't we do them different colors? You know, hot pink?
It's still there. The sun is still there, it's the different time of day, it's different, it's tough. You go out there and you look, two lines, it's tough. Okay, get one black and one purple, or something real crazy.
I would, I would have a better time dealing with different colors. Trust that I'm very interested in your cause, and I think you've got council interest up here, that, and you have been around for a long time. We know these guys from forever. They're the new game in town, but it's a very popular one, and you've heard us express interest.
Nothing against them, sorry.
Right, oh, right.
Nothing against them, but maybe they should have...
Let us do some magic here, let's see if...
Like Chris said, he might have some place to put them.
Peggy, Peggy, it's okay.
Yeah, well...
We, I think we heard you very loud and clear, and, yeah, and we want to make everybody, we want to try to come in the middle, put up with it for just a little while, and let's see if we can't expedite something to make almost everybody happy. We never can make everybody happy.
No, I don't expect that, but...
We heard you.
Yeah.
We heard you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else would have any public comments?
Ben Hocker, City of Sebastian. Not knowing much about pickleball, but we were just informed it's a national program. We've got a few courts. Is this an organization that, when they run their tournaments, they'll be renting, such as we do with the Little League and the... as we do with the Little League and the Football, et cetera? Is this a private-funded program that we're going to have to put in the courts? I don't, I didn't hear anybody say anything about that.
It's a sport.
It's a sport.
It's like playing tennis.
But it's a national sport.
Well, so is tennis, and so is football, and so is baseball. It's just like anything else, Ben.
Are tennis players here paying to an organization, or are they just a group of people playing tennis on the courts? That's fine. That's for the citizens. But if we've got an organization, and I relate back to Little League and the Football League, it's a national, enter, pay your dues, and run your tournaments. Is it that type of organization?
No.
We don't know. We don't know.
That's why, I just thought we might want to know about that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That moves us to new business. We have none? City Attorney Matters.
Just briefly, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Tropical Storm Erica brought a declaration of a state of emergency from the governor for the entire state, you may recall. And just from a point of view of one of your charter officers, I was so proud of the City of Sebastian's response. Was organized, was, the city was prepared for any, any action. Fortunately, nothing needed to be done. But the reason I'm bringing it up is, I'm drafting an ordinance for emergency management for the, for the city, and I'm going to have it available for you for first reading next time. The city really doesn't have one. And I think it would be helpful to spell out a few, a framework for dealing with emergencies, like the, fortunately, that Erica wasn't. But I've been here for almost seven years. This is the first time, really, we've had an emergency declared by the governor that included us, and that we really had to get mobilized. And so you'll be seeing that next time, under coming attractions.
Thank you, Mr. Ginsburg. City Manager Matters.
Yes, sir. Don't know if anybody noticed, but I was unavoidably absent at the last council meeting. I want to thank staff for, and this was during the Erica thing, which was 1,500 miles away, but that notwithstanding, I think staff did an absolutely fantastic job in stepping up, taking on those responsibilities. And also, a special thanks to Ken Kilgore, our CFO, who sat in this chair and helped with the meeting. So thank you very much. The other thing that I have is, everyone I think in town should, all residents, should have a blue bin, blue recycle bin delivered by now. On top of that bin, there is, at least at my house, there was a sticker that says, "For Thursday Pickup." We have been changed, City of Sebastian, to a Thursday pickup. There will no longer be a Monday pickup, which covers about, covered about 2,000...
Oh, Tuesday.
No, on the southern portion of town, about 2,000 residential units had a Monday pickup for...
I was Tuesday.
And you were Tuesday. You're in zone two, Ms. Coy. Myself also, I was a Tuesday. But now we are all moving to a Thursday pickup. And that commences on October 1st. So please do not use the bins before October 1st.
Question, are they going to have, because we have Monday and Thursday garbage pickup, are they going to also have garbage pickup on Thursdays as well?
They are also going to have garbage pickup on Thursdays. The garbage pickup will not change. That is our contract. The recycle contract is the county contract. Yes, sir?
Have a quick question.
Yes.
Mr. Griffin, sorry.
You're too young.
Yeah, right? The current recycle bins, do you know if they'll be picking those up from us, or what's going to be happening with it?
Yes, that's going to be the residents' option. You can keep them. You can put them out next to the blue bin on October 1st, and they will be collected and we disposed of. Or obviously, you can keep them or do whatever you want with them, store fish in them or whatever, whatever you want to do. The other thing to, to also consider, as I said, October 1st is the first day of pickup. Should be a Thursday. I hope it's a Thursday.
It is.
And they will then begin to collect on October, October 1st. If after three months, you as a residential unit decide that that 64-gallon bin is too big, they will exchange that for a smaller bin, which is, I believe, 34 gallons. Or if you decide it's too small, there is an even larger bin that's 95 gallons, I believe it is.
Six feet, yeah.
Something like that. But 90 days have to go by. So, and then you can make the phone call to Waste Management, and they'll change those things out. But after 90 days from October 1st. So residents do have the option of changing for a smaller bin or to the larger bin. Yes, sir? Sir?
Okay, City Clerk Matters.
I have nothing. Thank you.
City Council Matters. I have nothing. Vice Mayor Adams.
I have nothing. Thank you.
Councilmember Coy.
Yeah, just again, on the, on the waste management, I'm real excited to have my blue bin. It's physically there. I can touch it. And in fact, I am starting now, knowing that I have still three weeks till the 1st of October, I am starting to fill my bucket, because I'm fairly confident that it's going to take me three weeks to... Oh, Sally's going, "Me, too, me, too." It's going to take me three weeks to fill it up. So I'm starting now. If it looks like it's getting close, I might put out one more time, have to cart those other buckets out there. I just want to ask the general public to please, those of you who are not currently recycling, if you need help in learning how to do it, you, call me. I'll be glad to help you. I don't even come to your house. That's how, how committed I am to trying to get people to recycle, because there are so many people out there right now that are not doing it. And they don't do it, some of it is because it was difficult, carrying and carting those buckets out there to the end of the drive and remembering what day that was. That was difficult. We now have the wheeled bin. And here's the deal, folks. I'm getting, still getting complaints from people that their green bucket is not big enough. Well, yeah, did, did everybody hear that "ah" from the audience? That's the truth. "Ah," it's huge. And the reason it's not big enough in almost every case, and I want you out there to look, when you go by and you see these buckets with their lids open and stuff sticking out, what's that stuff? Pizza boxes, recyclables, all kinds of stuff. Normally, if you can't fit it in your green bucket, normally, the reason is you're not recycling. And the state has mandated recycling. So it's not a choice. It's not something that the big, bad City of Sebastian is putting on you. The state has said, "We will." So if you'd like help, my phone number is 388-0961. I can bring some literature over. I'd be happy to do that, just to get more people to recycle. So please, consider it. I know I'm going to be knocking on my neighbors' doors when I don't see them come out. We need to come up with some kind of plan for the folks who are not here, because there are still, if you drive around town, there are still some buckets that are sitting by the roadside. I think we need to come up with something quick to fix that, because it's an indication, just like newspapers collecting in the driveway, that nobody is home.
Can I ask a question when you're done?
Sure.
Thank you.
I'm probably going to talk about something else, but go ahead.
Just real quick, on the bins, I have a foreclosed house next door to me, and there's a bin sitting in the driveway. Those bins have numbers on them. They're registered to that address. Correct. So that probably is going on around town.
Yeah, it's, I noticed that, too.
Yeah. It's been sitting there. So is that a call to Indian River County Solid Waste and just let them know that there's some houses that there's no one living there and hasn't been for a couple of years?
Or, yeah, some, some determination needs to be made, whether they, the bin should be pushed up, you know, that maybe Waste Management come and push it up against the house, but to leave it, but to leave it sitting out in the, in the drive is, is a big signal. So again, that's my Waste Management plea. And my home, my home phone number is 388-0961. Give me a call if, if you want some help on recycling. 'Tis, 'tis the season for political signs again. I would just ask that if, if you, if a sign shows up in your yard and you didn't request it, it's your sign. You can do with it what you want. Don't, don't believe that somebody, anyone has the right to stick a sign on your property without your permission. So that's happened in the past. I get questions on that all the time. The most, most politicians and wannabe politicians are very, very responsible. They ask permission. So just, you don't have, you don't have to ask to have it removed if it's on your property. It's like receiving something in the mail. If you get one of those gifts from Reader's Digest or something that you didn't order, you get to keep it. So anyway, that's all I have. Come join us, this activity on Saturday, I think is going to be really good. Bring the kids down for the literacy and the reading project in the park. Thank you.
Councilmember Hill, nothing? Then we are adjourned.